Tuesday, February 15th at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the fudge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Laura, would you please take your role?
Yes. Councilmember Bachmann?
Here.
Mayor Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Here.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Planning and zoning director? Police chief?
Here.
And fire chief?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Is this a time for citizen comments on agenda-related item? This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items only. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Going once, going twice. Hearing none, consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding next study session, consideration of holding the run, the Pier 5K run walk on Saturday, August 13th, 2022, from 7:30 PM to 11:00 PM, consideration of tight lines for troops' charity veterans event to be held on Friday, May 20th, 2022, Saturday through Saturday, May 21st, 2022. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Laura, would you please take your roll call?
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. House business, we have none. New business, consideration of entering into a four-year installment purchase contract with Westshore Bank Truck and Trailer Specialties of Boeing Falls and DNK Truck Company defining previously approved purchase of a plow truck and related equipment. On September 7th, 2021, council approved the purchase of a plow truck and related equipment in the amount of $215,531. When approved, it was anticipated that the financing arrangements would have to be made at a later date due to the long lead time. The truck chassis is now done and has been delivered to the equipment vendor for assembly. The city solicited financing bids for the chassis and equipment and needs to close on the financing to pay the vendors. At this time, council could take action to adapt a resolution to enter into a four-years installment purchase contract with Westshore Bank Truck and Trailer Specialties of Boeing Falls Inc. and DNK Truck Company in the amount of $169,000 to finance the purchase of a plow truck and related equipment and further authorize the chief financial officer to execute any needed documents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Just the numbers, so we paid for the truck and chassis separately already, and we're paying for the rest of it now, is that what that number is?
Councilmember Bachmann, we haven't paid any of the bills yet, so once we, assuming that this gets approved, then I'll close with the bank, and then we'll pay the chassis vendor and hold on to the check until the truck is delivered and then pay the equipment back.
So the total amount with $215,000 and then the $169,000 is, what's that part?
So the $169,000 is the amount we're financing. The first payment is made out of cash on the mobile.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand. Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none, would you take the roll call?
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of ordinance 22-01 to amend the City of Manistee codified ordinances to add Chapter 275 Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce ordinance 22-01 amending the City of Manistee codified ordinances to add Chapter 275 Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
So did we used to have a beautification committee? Or I don't understand what the difference is this right now.
We did used to have it, and I think it was merged into the Harbor Commission at one time, and then it went, I'm not sure if it's still in the Harbor Commission or what happened.
I walked up here, I can't answer the question either, I apologize. This is something new that was based on recommendations from the ad hoc Blight Committee. Years and years ago, this is something different, but this would be a new committee.
But this is the follow-up from the Blight Committee and the, and the bylaw getting discussion about the group to make a presentation and all that stuff.
Yeah, this is based on the recommendation.
This is just not going to be their committee.
We had a beautification committee before, nothing to do with restoration.
It used to be part of the Parks.
Yeah, there was the Parks and Beautification Committee.
That's, that's what I wanted to get clear. So, so this, this is going to be separate from the ad hoc one? That's from a recommendation from that, so this will be a separate entity?
This is going to be a committee that's addressing blight in the city.
Yeah, ad hoc is gone, correct?
Ad hoc, they hold their obligation by bringing recommendations to council.
Okay.
This is part of, one of the recommendations was a standing blight committee. So we've traded the words blight for neighborhood restoration, beautification.
A little bit more positive.
Exactly.
I got it, okay. That's what was my confusion, okay. Because I thought that maybe this way we were resurrecting a former beautification thing, but that's what, so that makes sense.
It's morphed into something else.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I don't know if you want to stand up there enough for this. In the one part of it, we talk about the qualifications of the, the members. Is it, and you talk about the residents. Could that be a, somebody who has a residence who's not homesteading, say this is a second home up, up here for them? Did we talk about that all, any distinction on that?
I, I would interpret residence as it appears in here to be someone that is living here, and that is their residence. So if they own the property, it'd be their homestead. They don't have to necessarily have to own property, but I would consider this to be their permanent residence. Manistee County or City of Manistee, rather.
And the only reason I bring this up is I've had several people contact me and ask about that because they own second homes up here and they'd like to be on this committee. So I told them I would bring it up and see where the origin of this was and if it's too late to change it or not.
We'd have to change the language to, to reflect that, and we certainly can, but as it's drafted now, then those folks would not qualify.
So are you thinking about property owner as being in lieu of resident? So I think if someone made a motion a second and council approved it with that, could make the change.
Well, I kind of sprung this on council, so I really don't know how they feel about it.
I'm not really sure that I would agree with that. I think, you know, there's, there is a difference if you're vested in this is your home and not just, you know, again, because of property owner, you could be here for a week, month. You could be a renter, you know, you could be, you know, in that, you know, somebody who is just renting property. Yep, so I'm not sure. I think being part of the city and paying, paying your, not really dues, but, but being vested.
Right, well, the, the reason I bring it up is because the people that contacted me own property someplace else, and they also use a property up here, which will be their retirement home, so, okay.
Has anybody called you about being on the committee at all? Nothing at all. About the people who've been on the Blight Committee?
I haven't heard from them at all since notification we're going through this process.
Okay.
So I'm, I would assume, maybe I should assume that they're waiting for the bylaws to be approved and...
I think there's a couple at least that I know that are interested in being on the committee again once it starts.
I just agree that, with the mayor, that we should not eliminate people just because they're, they're snowbirds or something, that I would, that I'd like to include them, but if that's not the motion, then we'll go from there.
Well, I'm just wondering how often they would meet, and if they're only here two months out of the year, they wouldn't, like, they'd be taking up a spot but not being able to come to the meetings or be involved in the, the committee.
Well...
That would be the thing I'd be concerned about.
The limited contact I've had with these people is that they would be, they're more than willing to be here at the, on the monthly basis or whenever it meets. Most of our commissions meet monthly, since I have a home up here anyway. Anybody else?
I just have a question on the report once a year to council. Is there a reason why it's only once a year?
I think it's consistent with the rest of the committees.
Okay. I, I just, I think that's a problem with the rest of the committees too, since they're only given a report once a year. Nobody really knows what anybody's doing, so I would, I would like to see a report more than once a year.
Oh, we can change that to more than once.
Well, I think this is the minimum, right? This is, this is the mandatory minimum. We can ask for the, any one of the committees to report whenever we want.
And usually the once a year is a presentation, so maybe there can be other updates provided.
Committee has minutes, so we can always look at those updates from...
Yeah.
And now they're on the, the program.
We could put it on a work session someday every evening, we could just ask to put on a work session, like, we could, that would be easy enough to do if there was, if something going on in interest, we could just say we'd like to have a work session.
Well, I think I'd like to try to amend it if possible, even, just to make an attempt to change it from resident or property owner.
So there's, there's two spots, I think, in 275-02A and C where it talks about residents appointed. Are you saying that you want residents or city property owner appointed in both of those?
Yes.
Okay. And right now you have a motion pending, and so if there was a motion made and supported to amend the previous motion to make those changes, then we could proceed.
I'll make a motion to amend the previous motion.
I'll second that.
You please take roll.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
No.
Councilmember Gabowski?
No.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Now...
Now we vote on the amended motion.
I'd like to propose an amendment to...
No, you, you've, I think you've already done that. We, the motion to amend, so now we're, now council, if your discussion is finished, would vote on the amended motion that's been, been made, so...
Okay, now we need a motion to vote on the amended.
Now, you've already have a motion pending. I'm sorry, yes.
Have to vote.
All right, let's vote.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Saylor, for helping us walk through that.
You got that, didn't you?
Yeah. Consideration of text amendments to the zoning ordinance adding language addressing view shed. For the approval language, for the approval of language addressing view shed in Article 2 definitions and interpretations and Article 5 general provisions in the City of Manistee zoning ordinance. Language has been approved by the planning commission. An ordinance, as an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce zoning ordinance Z22-01 with proposed text amendments addressing view shed. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Discussion.
I just had an opinion about view sheds. I, I went to the planning commission, expressed my desire to have them protected, not not protected, and I think there, a lot of people in this community have view sheds we're not even aware of, but my comments didn't carry the day, so just letting you know is where I'm at.
Could somebody explain this view shed to us?
Zach, could you please give us an overview? Thank you.
So I trust you guys got the memo from Mark Whitliff from the planning commission? Okay. So, so really, this doesn't change anything that, that's not already existing, it's just helping make it more clear. So to, I guess to answer your question, is it, is it just what is a view shed?
Yeah.
So view shed is basically what you can see from your property. In this case, it's, it's placed underwater protection. So if somebody's behind, you know, if there's two parcels, one's close to the water, and they put up a house, say, the, the view shed from the person on the back parcel, that's, they can't say, well, you can't put that there because I have a view now. That, 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 that would be one instance where that would be a view shed would not be protected. Sure, followed it. Um, I can keep going with other examples or...
I think the issue came up, Zach, is my correct, that there were view sheds across public land too, and there was a request to trim public land, not private.
Right.
To maintain a view shed, and that's kind of where this discussion generated from.
Yep.
Was my issue to begin with, but just if Jim doesn't...
I, I can go through that one. So, so the issue being there that, that a public land tree grew, as trees tend to do, and, and they said that, well, now my, my, now I don't have a view that I once did. The planning commission just wanted to make crystal clear that, well, we're not, we're not going to be involved with, with that either. That, that can go back to the tree commission if the tree commission wants to, wants to do that, but I think historically they haven't addressed anything with views, they've stuck to health and safety of trees.
And it does literally open up the proverbial can of worms because there are a lot of trees in our, our city, our city properties, and now we can basically, you know, again, we're just trying to make it where citizen can come in and say, I'd like that tree cut down, I'd like that tree cut down, oh, and those two over there, because I'd like a better view than I have today. Or, you know, hey, the tree's grown, you know. So that's, that's part of it, is to try to protect the city from not being deforested by our citizens.
That's a good point, and there's some people that would actually think that that's a lovely tree, it's an oak tree, you know, so, yeah.
And that's the trees commission's job, so, kind of to make those decisions for this community and the city.
Does anybody else have any questions for Zach that we have, that we have, we have his under...
You had pointed out something that I really didn't comprehend, but with basically saying you're not getting involved, then you just point it back to the tree commission?
Essentially, the tree commission, the tree commission could take it up. They haven't historically, like I said, they haven't historically messed with view sheds at all, but they theoretically could.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on this? I'm not hearing any. I think it's safe to go ahead and take your roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
No.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of text amendments to the zoning ordinance adding language addressing stormwater and lot coverage. For the approval of language addressing lot coverage waivers for stormwater management in Article 5 general provisions in the City of Manistee zoning ordinance. Language has been approved by the planning commission. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce zoning ordinance Z22-02 with proposed text amendments addressing storm and lot coverage. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Just wonder how much this clears up the issue for Milwaukee House. Is this a good fit, a good fix?
Let's have Zach come back up.
In short, yes. It, it...
Yes, it's all, that's good enough for me.
I could, I could go on all day about it, but it provides a lot of flexibility for, for potential developers.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
And, and the Milwaukee guy is okay with this. I know that he was not happy initially, so I just...
Sitting right there.
Is he sitting here? I don't know, I don't know who he is.
No?
No. I, I can't speak for him, but I think Bill's been in touch with him, so...
So I did get some more, I had some email exchanges with him today about, about the plan, and he did, he did already put in stormwater, I guess. He put, he put some items in here that would qualify for the green infrastructure exemption, so that's going to help him. There's some other issues we're clearing up, and he's provided more answers, so he hasn't formally submitted for the site plan review, but my hope was to get everything cleared up before he did, and I think we're, we're getting there, so, yeah. We're working with them to, to make sure that whatever, yeah, we're going to work with them to make sure he gets what he needs, which is the parking lot, so...
Okay, well, good, I'm glad everything's moving forward.
Yeah, we don't want to be turning people away. That looks like a beautiful place, and it would be a real bummer if that would cause him to not want to do it, right?
Absolutely.
So whatever we can do on our side, I, I think is, is worth the effort.
Well, changing this language will help the planning commission immensely because they, they were very, they did, they do, they stuck with the wording they had in the ordinance, so this is, this will be a good at this point.
Thank you all for helping that come to fruition.
Anybody else have any questions on this? I think we're ready to take the vote.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of collective bargaining agreement with the Command Officers Association of Michigan. At this time, council could take action to approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement with Command Officers Association of Michigan and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion. I, I would just kind of like the Cliff Notes on this document. What has changed from, what has changed in this agreement as, compared to our old agreement that we had? Maybe that's the best way to ask my questions.
Just, just to run it down, Cliff Notes version, we cleaned up some language with vacation time, holiday time usage, vacation scheduling. We restructured to a certain extent the wage scale for command officers. There were some second accent language that was more consistent with the schedule they work.
Educational reimbursement, that's kind of more the chief has to approve certain courses, and also capping those, the new sergeants at 20% above the POAM highest step, which is something the state police did, so it kind of keeps us, so that it doesn't keep ballooning, I think, at the end. So those are kind of the, the major points.
You eliminated steps, you're right.
We did.
We really did, you talked to the mayor, you really eliminated the steps.
Yeah.
How many years is this agreement good for?
Three years.
Three years. And what's the overall cost? Is there a pro forma, so to speak, or a cost increase over this three years from the past three years? And if so, what was that about, what that amount is? Do we know?
I'll set numbers. Councilmember Schmansky, we didn't run a formal cost, and there's only three members in this union, and we were trying to get to a place that we needed to do a certain things, but I, I think that it's fair to say that it, it probably trades a little bit a short-term cost for some long-term cost containment, and it makes things easier to administer moving forward. So it wasn't, it wasn't a tremendous amount that we had to give up, it was a pretty fair contract to both sides.
Sure, great, thank you.
Any more questions for the chief? Thank you. Any discussion from councilmembers? Hearing none, it is time to take the roll call.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the compensation commission, harbor commission, historic district commission, parks, pay commission, and tree commission. Mayoral and manager appointments require a motion, second, and council votes its support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all, the nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives majority support. Historic district commission, one vacancy, term ending 2/28/24. Applicants must be city residents. One member is desired who meets professional, one member is desired who meets professional qualification standards for archaeology, architect, architectural historian, historian, or historic architect. Council appointment.
I'd like to nominate Kathryn Kenny, 429, in Half River Street. Second?
It doesn't require a second.
Oh, it doesn't, okay.
No other nominees, so we can go ahead and vote on this.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Parks Commission, two vacancies, one term ending 6/30/22, one term ending 6/30/23. Applicants may be non-residents but must own real estate or a business slash profession having a licensed business located in the city or have a child attending school within the city. Mayoral appointment. I'd like to appoint Karen Platola, 264 First Avenue, to term ending 6/30/23.
I'll second.
Roll call?
I'm sorry, we, we need a motion first and then a second to support the mayor's...
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
And second.
Thank you. Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Notices, communications, announcements. A report from Republic Services, a regular part of each council meeting, is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Mr. Matt... Alleti?
Close enough.
Okay. A report on the activities of Republic Services and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities. It's your show now.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor, member of the council. I appreciate you giving me a minute of time tonight. This is a little bit of local flavor that we always talk about once a year, just to kind of keep you guys in the loop. And then I'm going to throw a little bit of a national spin on it as well. This is about an hour and 45-minute presentation. I am CCMA. Each year, I'm going to boil it down to about eight minutes. So don't strain. But anytime that you have a question or anything, I say, please just raise a hand or get my attention, I will kind of roll through it kind of fast.
Still get our CPU credits for that?
You will get additional education credit for it, yes. You go to slideshow and then start at the top there. From the beginning. Look at that. Like we know what I do. So just top of mind, in the last five years, we've had a lot of challenges in the solid waste industries, starting with China Sword, which goes back, you know, five, six years ago now. That's where the commodity and the processing changed. We went from zero to $10, $10 to $40, $40 to $70. And this year, some people tried to push that up to about $130. Lots of people prevailed, and we kept that down a little bit lower than that with about a $5 or $6 increase. So that was a good thing. But that continues to be a challenge, just commodities, moving commodities, keeping those things moving and the true of it. The coronavirus, of course, was an interesting thing and continues to be, and we're still facing industry-wide challenges on labor shortages with what I would call CDL and mechanics. Looking at your curbside program, you know, these are the numbers I like to show to you every year. The cart program is rolling along swimmingly. Not a lot of comments are coming out of residents. Everyone's happy that has it. There's 623 people participating in the bag portion of that and 2,279 producing in the cart. That's just looking at the residential sector of the program. If you look at your tonnages there, 2018, 19, 20, and 21, you'll see that that number kind of starts climbing in 2019, and then COVID hits in 2020 and carries into 2021. There's just more people working from home. There's more stuff happening at home than ever before, and so that's pushing those tonnage numbers up, you know? 20 tons over where it was in 2018, which isn't unexpected. That's kind of the new norm at the curb. It's higher than it's ever been, and we're predicting it's going to stay that way. We've got a lot of people that have taken secondary homes. We've made them their primary homes, as you've seen Max Exodus out of Chicago and Indianapolis. And so you're starting to see some of that come here locally. And those are just things that are driving those headwinds from the disposal costs. The city has a contract that isolates those disposal costs, so you play that fat fee and then the disposal cost per year, and so that's just isolated into your budget. The DDA refresh program, I don't know if you've walked through downtown on a Sunday in the summer, but God, it was nice. It was nice not to have the trash at the curb. You know, there was a little bit of noise at first, but that noise has kind of gone away. The dumpster program is working as it is. There is no overflows. It's not being abused that we're seeing with any great measure, and it seems to be working well. I know there's still some people that are challenged by it, but everything and change takes a little bit of time. You know, we're not seeing, or at least I'm not hearing, any calls from city hall and no, you know, letters coming in on that topic anymore either. So I think it's done, I think it's done exactly what that committee designed it to, and I think it's been a great change for the downtown area. The drop-off recycling program, we had some noise in that last year. Lots of people, again, using that as their home, lots more Amazon packages and doggy goody packages than ever before coming into the city. So lots more people kind of using that. If you look at just the single stream tons of that, though, and you look at 2019, 2020, and 2021, you'll see that that number goes down each year, and some of that is lightweighting, some of that's people changing their buying habits, not buying as much glass as they once did. Michigan's a bottle-built state, so we benefit from that on the recycling side. We don't see that heavy glass in that recycle container that a lot of other communities do, if you get down in the Chicago or the Indianapolis market. So that's running good. Again, nothing's been in the press lately. We addressed that. Was that earlier this year, wasn't it? About six months ago, we came in front of you, DDA and, or not DA, DPW and myself, and we talked about what was going on there. And so that's running along, and if you've got any questions about that, I'd be more than happy to answer. But the partnership with MCC seems to be doing better as well as they're maintaining that site better, and that's helping keep that noise down. You know, we do an annual cleanup event each year. Last year, we did a shredded event, and it didn't do well. Not many people showed up for it, and we had two great big trucks sitting in a park lot waiting for lots of stuff to shred, and not a lot of people showed up. We did have a great turnout when we did paint back in 2018, and we're kind of having a simple of things, so we're thinking about doing paint again this year. I'm still waiting for Jeff's final word on that from the DPW. If you've got any ideas that you want to share with him to push that out there or share with me, we'd love to hear them. But there's certain things we can and can't do, but we've got vendors and, you know, latex paint's not something that takes at county solid, that does not get taken at the county solid waste program. And so that's what the vast majority of the paint that was brought in last time, people who had latex paint. And then that's brought down to Battle Creek and has turned into recycled paint and is pushed into the habitat, humanity stores, is where that paint actually ends up after the fact.
So we don't have to put anything in the cans to make that a solid or anything?
No, you bring it in as a liquid, because they want it as a liquid to turn that back into recycled paint, yep. And so that's kind of where we're leaning right now. You know, I haven't gotten official words yet, but we'll kind of wrap that up here at the end of this month. So hold out on notifying the public yet, but that's kind of, it's kind of the thought. We do one of those each year, typically late May, early June, and we use it in the Parker Ranover, the youth armory is where we do that at, so. This talks about that volume. If you look at the volume during the pandemic, you can see the spike up, you can see the commercial spike down. Some of the stuff you guys have seen at least once before, but that's just kind of showing that new norm. The residential level's actually leveled back out a little bit since then, but we're seeing, you know, 10 to 15 pounds per home higher this year than we were, you know, years past and kind of holding there. So that's something that you have to look at when you're looking at the budget and you're looking at that disposal cost in the budget, just to make sure that you're covering that. Oop, wrong direction. Recycling commodities, this is kind of a cool thing to look at. If you look at that dark green line, that's the bucket. That's everything combined together. So '17, when the market started to crash, you see that going down, 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 down. In 2021, towards the tail end, it started coming back up, and it's continuing to climb into that positive right now, which is good, because that keeps those processing costs down. So a lot of fluctuation in the last, you know, three, four years in the commodity values, and that's what really drives those costs. So that bucket line's a good line to look at, that green line versus looking at all the little individual ones for the different commodities.
Can I just ask one?
Absolutely.
It's really a little bit off the wall. I have no idea how they came up with the China Sword.
Yeah, so...
So what does that mean?
So there was, the China Sword was the second initiative from China. So the first one was the green fence. So they built this hypothetical green fence that said, we're not going to take the contaminants, and that didn't work so well. And they said, well, if the fence doesn't work, we're going to break out the sword. And so they brought the sword, and basically, the China Sword initiative is what it was initiated as a national campaign out of China, was them really cutting out the contaminants that were coming from domestic United States and Europe into China. China basically said, we're not going to be the world's landfill. And so what that looks like, and picture a bale of paper, so you've got a two-ton bale of mixed newspaper and magazines. Inside that two-ton bale of paper, there was plastic wrap, there was flattened water bottles, there was other contaminants that weren't paper. So when they broke that bale at a mill, they'd have, you know, 30% contaminants of that two tons of material. And they basically were trying to push back on that contamination level by making the processing facilities where that material is sorted and baled develop and deliver cleaner materials. That's what China Sword really was.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Absolutely. You know, then we talk about costs. So there's, the steel inside of our industry is kind of the highest-end affected, and so if you look at the cost of a truck, if you go back six years, a truck was costing about $220,000 to buy a brand-new garbage truck. Today, it's $335,000 to buy that same truck. Some of that's technology, some of that's steel, some of that's manufacturing cost. Looking at like a three-yard container behind a restaurant is a kind of an example of that. In 2015, that container was $412, in 2021, it was $737. That was just the difference in cost for that same small metal container behind it. We mentioned at the top of this, you know, the trucking and the maintenance people. If you look at the bottom left, only 20% of the CDL drivers in the continental United States right now are under 45 years old. That's going to continue to give us a problem as the older drivers age out of the transportation industry. We've, on average, about 25 to 30% price increases in what we're paying our people just to keep them, because everyone's looking for CDL drivers. So we've done a lot of significant rate increases in the last year to our employees just to keep them and staff and keep them happy. Maintenance techs are even worse. I mean, we actually built a facility down in Austin, Texas, where we're training maintenance technicians solely to work on garbage trucks. So think of a career center for diesel techs, but just hyper-focused on garbage trucks. And we're bringing people who are willing to relocate across the United States, and we're paying for their training just to get diesel mechanics in our facilities. Manistee, we're actually doing really good on our staff right now. I mean, we're 100% staffed in Manistee. We have been through this whole thing. We've transitioned a few people, but not a great deal. COVID has not really affected us super hard at the hauling division, so here, we're good. But one of the advantages that Republic has is what we call our Blue Crew, and when things happen across the country, the Blue Crew is like people from Manistee who would go help somewhere else. And as everyone else is struggling, that Blue Crew is getting smaller and smaller and smaller. You know, we still have a good group of people that do it, and if you pay attention to the news, you saw some big strikes going out on the West Coast in the last couple of months, and that took a lot of Blue Crew people to continue to get that trash picked up in San Diego and some other cities. There were drivers from Manistee out there helping make that happen. So Blue Crew's important to us, and we want to make sure we have enough people in our group to do that on a continuous basis. So, you know, it's just another plug to, you know, increase letting people go towards career tech and not feeling that pressure towards a four-year college streak. And not everyone needs to go to college. I mean, we need truck drivers and plumbers and electricians, and, you know, that's an important thing that we need to continue to fill. I mean, the truck driving, the fleet, you know, under 25, 20%, those are the people who move everything into your store, you know? I mean, you can't have toilet paper, you can't have food, you can't have, you know, gas if you don't have those drivers out there running the road. So it's important that we continue to keep an eye on that, and just wanted you guys to be aware of it.
Got a question. Are you seeing any women move into the workforce?
Absolutely, yeah. We have got, just in our division that Todd Harland manages, we've got nine female employees driving trucks right now.
I was thinking with the automation, it would make it easier for...
It is, yep. And that's part of the automation. The automation keeps that driver, you know, dry when it's cold, dry when, I mean, dry when it's wet and warmer when it's cold, keeps them in the truck more than out of the truck, and allows people who have some other disabilities to be in that type of work that couldn't before. And I say disabilities, but I also say limitations in that. I mean, not everyone can lift 200 pounds. And so getting a joystick in their hand gives someone a lot more freedom to do that. And we're starting to see some people with some more disabilities joining the solid waste industry that have never been there before because of automation. You know, if you look at, Mount Pleasant's a strange example of it, but Mount Pleasant actually, through their county program, employs a special needs group as part of a contractor's labor force to pick up their curbside recycling by hand and place it into trailers. It's not the most effective process, but it's a neat, it's a neat way to involve those people in the community.
Are the wages pretty good? I know, can't probably ask you specifically what your wages are, but can you give us a range of...
Absolutely. So our drivers are making between $25 and $36 an hour, depending on where they're at. And in this region, in our demographic area, you're in the high 20s.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you know, when we're talking about wages, there's, you know, there's the immediate core wage for that employee, but also the thing that makes Republic a little bit different, and I don't want to ramble on on this, so don't let me, is all of our drivers are fully uniformed every day, so all of their uniforms are provided from their socks to their belts to their boots to their safety glasses. They get all of that. I mean, all of that comes to them as an employee benefit. That doesn't cost them anything. Everything that you see them ever wearing in high vis is something that's provided from us, their pants, their shirts, I mean, the whole nine yards. The only thing we don't give them is underwear. Unlike the military, we don't supply that. Sometimes I wish they would. So the annual price increase we talked about at the beginning, the CPI across the United States is continuing to grow. December CPI for the CPIU, which is all things in, was 7%. You know, water, sewer, trash is what your guys' contract is built on with a fixed number, you know, is trending about 4%. That's isolating really what we do and not looking at food and fuel and all the other things as a collective, but just looking at our block. So your contract is right where it needs to be in terms of following the correct CPI, but that continues to push, and so that will have effects on future budgets as you look down the road. It's interesting to look at that, because, you know, for a long time, CPIU trended at 1.5%, 2% tops, and now it's at 7. So, and that's affecting a lot of things. And, you know, just talking about what we're doing out in the world as sustainability goals, we continue to invest in infrastructure, we continue our charitable giving, and we do that in the community as well, and are always looking for more places to give money. We gave $20 million nationally last year to what we call our charitable giving and our community foundations. And that went from everything to, you know, pavilions, to playgrounds, to park works, to, you know, anything that you can imagine we've, you know, donated money to. And I'll continue to work with city manager to identify those things here that we can continue to contribute to as a local partner. You know, we believe in renewable energy, circular economy. You know, almost all of our facilities are gas-to-energy plants now, and we continue to work towards those. We're putting solars on landfills that have never been there before. So we're continuing to do our parts on those as well, and some more to come on that for the greater Manistee area soon. And other than that, that's more than my eight minutes, so I'm going to shut up and let you ask any questions you have and then get out of your hair.
Is there an opportunity for recycling batteries, you know, small batteries of multiple different types?
Absolutely. There's a bucket program that has a fee to it to do that. Sometimes the county solid waste program includes that, and we could look into that and present some information to city manager to bring back to you on some different solutions to that. Some communities do it where they put a bucket at the library, and they put a bucket at city hall and things like that, so residents who want to do that. The biggest concerns with batteries right now are the nickel cad batteries, right? The lithium batteries. Those tend to start fires, and so if we can keep those out of the trash trucks and we can keep those out of the recycle trucks, it helps protect that $300,000 truck that's running down the road from catching on fire. We don't do it very often, but occasionally, we have to. When a truck starts on fire, it's an interesting process, because the driver is instructed to protect the asset, and the driver is instructed to get that load off the truck so the fire department can put it out. And so what he does is look for the closest parking lot or the closest side street that doesn't have a lot of traffic, and he exits that load from the truck. Because if it starts inside the truck, it's not only going to affect the fuel system but the hydraulic oils, and it makes it much harder for the fire department to put out. So I've, in my career, in my 10 years, I've done that four times, where I've gone out with DPW crews and had to pick up loads that were exited from a truck for various reasons, and it's not fun. Two of those have been battery loads, where batteries have started the fires.
Where did I find more information on that facility and tech that you built to work on garbage trucks?
I'm sorry, what's that?
You built the facility, where did I find something about that facility? So I could maybe, if I need someone to refer to there?
Yeah, I can definitely get some information sent to you.
Could you?
Absolutely, yep. And lastly, I'd just like to thank, you know, Ben Tanley has been doing your community for 15 years. He's the rock that makes Manistee is what it is in terms of our customer service to you guys, and he's a great guy. And without him and the support of the council and the support of city staff, I mean, in the last year, we've really stretched city staff to do a lot of really big projects I mean, in the last year, we've really stretched city staff to do a lot of really big projects as it relates to solid waste and, and changes. You know, between that DDA thing and with guarding that, you know, will in the long term be great. But at the immediate time was, you know, a lot of stress and, and some extra work. So, you know, without those key players and without you guys, we, we wouldn't be here today. And so we're very thankful for you. And I just wanted to say that a minute and, and make sure I thanked Ben publicly because he does a great job here in the community.
Well, he's, he's had great customer service skills and lots of stories around town about him going out of his way to help somebody out. So we can't thank you enough for letting Ben be our pariah, so.
Thank you very much. No other questions? I'll let you guys have your night.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Okay. Now we come to the fun part. At this time, also could take action to adopt a resolution of thanks and appreciation for retiring Department of Public Works Administrative Assistant Kathy Boyle. Wow. Can I hear a second?
I did, yeah.
Welcome.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Well, I think we need Kathy Boyle to come forward.
Need some moral support around here, Kathy? We can all come up there.
Your gavel.
I'm going to read this to you, so you can.
Kathy.
Kathy. Whereas Kathy Boyle began her career in the city of Manistee on September 12th, 1977 at City Hall, working in the water department and the treasures office. Through professionalism and hard work in 1996, she advanced to her current position as Department of Public Works Administrative Assistant. And whereas during her tenure, Kathy demonstrated outstanding interpersonal skill, multitasking and exceptional customer service in the execution of her many duties and responsibilities. Whereas throughout her tenure, utilizing flexibility, grace and finesse, Kathy worked with several Department of Public Works directors, adjusting to the ever-evolving needs. And whereas as the Department of Public Works Administrative Assistant, she serves several boards and commissions, including the Parks Commission, Industry Commission, and others as needed. And whereas Kathy will remain a great friend to the employees of the city of Manistee. And whereas Kathy has served the city of Manistee with pride, dedication and integrity since September 1977, completing 44 years of service to the community. Now therefore it be resolved that on behalf of the Manistee, city council, city staff, and as citizens of this community, we give thanks and appreciation to Kathy Boyle for her long and loyal service to this community and congratulate her upon her retirement as of February 22nd, 2022. Further say it's not, this is a resolution. Well, now we come toward the end of our agenda. First comments, citizens' concerns and comments. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. I don't see. Hearing none. We will move on to, um, officials and staff. Mr. Gamble.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items from last week. Um, Councilwoman Pontiac requested benches be added to the ice rink. DPW put in two picnic tables to the area. Um, there were some follow-up questions about the Nine Street boat launch for condo land replacement. Um, I spoke with Erin Campbell over at the MDNR. She stated there weren't restrictions on what the proceeds could be used for. The, I, they want to make sure that any land that's replacement land needs to be of equal or greater value than what they receive. The, you know, one thing, they wanted the full 10 acres. Um, I talked to her about the idea that, you know, the wastewater treatment plan expansion was part of that, um, 10 acres that we bought for Morton Salt. So that was the idea of the use. So we're going to do a counterproposal stating we proposed one acre and then maybe nine for wastewater treatment expansion. And so we'll see, that's kind of a, it's going to be debated. There, we'll wait to hear back from the National Park Service. She thought this is going to come down to a yellow book appraisal, so it is going to be a longer process. Our priority is getting this grant application in without the penalty. So we'll be working through this, but I think at the end of the day, just having all this resolved December 2022, while Mr. Ficano is finishing up his work there, um, this will be coming back to council. But it's going to be, it's, it is going to be a process we work through with the MDNR and the Park Service.
I'm not familiar with what a yellow book, a yellow book appraisal is.
Yeah, from what it sounds like, it's a more stringent, um, appraisal process. And I haven't been through it myself, so I guess we'll, we'll be finding out. So some other updates, um, as far as the Oprah at 155A Street. Um, but then the update, they're anticipating construction to be completed in late spring. Um, their paperwork to the Treasury Department, I think that hasn't been approved by the state yet. So, um, there's some, they're doing some follow-up there. The 314 Sibbons Street Oprah, uh, staff reviewed the site plan earlier this, the last week. And it's going to go to the planning commission for approval on March 3rd.
Did you say 314?
Correct.
Sibbons? Okay.
Um, the updated listings, Mr. Knutti updated the listings, all but Sixth Street Avenue. Um, apparently there's some act, uh, some interest shown in that one over by, um, by the river. We're also trying to get a rendering of what that could look like for, for potential buyers. And the pictures, he's, plans to update after the snow melts. And that's kind of my updates for now. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gamble? Mr. Saylor?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Laura?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Mr. Bradford?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Chief Glass?
I'm ready, Your Honor, thank you.
Chief Cameron?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
City engineer?
Uh, I guess first just congratulations to Kathy. I really get this work delivered. And then, uh, the, the bridge, I think everybody's aware that most of the painting is done. And they removed the containment system. They've got the, the waste off the bridge. It appears to be very open and inviting to walk across. Um, there's been a question raised, can we be using it for pedestrian or open it? Um, what's going to happen now is the demolition crews are going to come in to work on the concrete at the top of the bridge. And so they're going to have holes in the concrete. Um, that'll go through a process. They're going to kind of look for windows of warm weather and they'll patch that concrete. So from our standpoint, we're really, we would prefer to leave the bridge closed and not allow access across it until that work's done. One of the things that will happen is when the concrete work is done, we'll have to do, um, basically got to put a coating on it. And that requires the concrete to sit for 28 days. So they're going to get done with the concrete, which maybe they'll save this until March. They have till April to be done. So there's a good chance we could look at opening the bridge maybe in that period, but then have to close it for a day or two to put that, um, coating on the, the concrete. So a lot of that's still to be played out. It's very weather dependent. We can't do too much cold weather concrete work, so, um, we'll wait and see. But, um, in this interim, while we're getting into the demolition, uh, we would, I think it's better just to leave it closed. Let, kind of people's habits stand up for this domain. That's all I have.
Zach, would you like to speak? Do you have anything further?
I don't think I have any other updates. Thank you.
Okay. You know, it's a shame that Jepakula isn't here. And this is, I think, your first council meeting or something like that. How would you like to give an update for the DPWs since Jeff isn't here?
Eric's right.
Okay. All right. Did I miss anybody? I don't think I did. Oh, yes, council members.
Congratulations to Kathy. Forty-four years, no joke. It is no joke putting up with this for 44 years. You deserve more than a proclamation, maybe a medal or something. Thank you for your service.
I'm going this way now. Um, council member pot, or Martin? I don't know.
Um, yeah, I'd like to congratulate Kathy. Um, I got to know her like five years ago and she was very welcoming, so we'll miss her. Good to see that the tight lines for troops is back. That was really missed, so. And then just to keep on the radar, those potholes on 31 are really bad. And I think they're getting worse by the day, so we got to do something.
Ms. Lundberg?
I have grew with you on the potholes. I didn't realize it until I was driving just this recently and went, oh my goodness, what happened?
Yeah, it feels like.
What did happen? Is it just because of the snow that melted? And, I don't know.
Yeah, the water gets in the hole and breaks out and it comes through and break it up.
Because they're new this winter and they weren't like that in the fall, so. Um, yes, and Kathy, I don't really know you, but anyone who's done something 44 years deserves praise. So thank you for all your years of service. And Zach, I, I, I appreciate, uh, the work you did with, um, Milwaukee House and, uh, holding to the, um, the, our ordinance and then making a way for him to be able to do what he needed to do. So I appreciate your work on that and, um, city manager as well.
Thank you. Mr. Gabowski?
Kath, we worked a long time together and when I bring the donors down, you're happy to get them. So we've, we've gone through a lot of times when I worked for the city. I appreciate it. I, I agree with the potholes. I've hit them. I think we've all hit them. So when they can get them fixed, I know it's hard to do it now. So, uh, Zach, I just wanted to thank you for your underwater test because I didn't know a lot of that stuff. So that helps me out and I can look it up too.
Mr. Schmansky?
Uh, yeah, Kathy, you know, it's always a treat when I have to come down there to, uh, to get stuff for, for one of the organizations. And you're always so helpful and so willing to support our organizations. I, you're, you truly are going to be sorely missed. Uh, and, uh, and I, and I know that, uh, the city owes you a great debt of gratitude for 44 years of dedication to us. So thank you very much. Also, Mr. Bilet, I, I have to comment, your drivers are exceptional. They really are. I have seen them many, many times go out of their way to, to not just pick up garbage, but to help where they can. And, and I know that that kind of sentiment doesn't happen automatically. It is encouraged and supported by, by your organization. So thank you and thank them for us.
Thank you.
Mary.
Ms. Lundberg?
Um, just congratulations, Kathy. Thank you for helping me through the years and answering all my ridiculous questions and emails. And you'll be missed. That's all I have.
I can't say it enough times. I thank you so much. Um, honestly, you are the light blood, um, of the DPW garage over there. And I, I, they're going to miss you. They better find somebody really spectacular because you're going to, you've got big shoes to fill.